I'd like to call the meeting to order and I want to thank our members that participated in the tour. Mrs. Thompson, will you call the roll?
Mr. Baum.
Present.
Mr. Martin.
Present.
Dr. Fellow.
Here.
Ms. Brown.
Here.
Dr. Mann.
Present.
Mr. Thompson.
Present.
Ms. Wa.
Present.
Mr. Soto.
Here.
Mr. Soto, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Gladly.
All right, so put your right hand over your heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Baum.
Yes.
Point of personal privilege.
Yes.
I want to thank the staff, they have figured, it's my voters, so it does not reflect in my eyes, but the audience can see. So, thank you very much, I appreciate that and I appreciate it so quickly.
That looks great. Thank you, Dr. Mann. Announcements, greetings and introductions, we'll start with Ms. Brown. Trustee Brown, is there any announcements or introductions? Yeah, I'm going around to the trustees.
No, I do not have any tonight.
Dr. Mann, any additional?
Nothing tonight.
Dr. Fellow.
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Martin.
Thank you.
Trustee Wa.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment and to thank AS and the Feminist Club for the event last night, that we had the viewing of misrepresentation, it was very well attended, lots of the community came, and I want to give special thanks to trustee Brown who came and trustee Baum who offered to support the event and make sure that it happened, so everything was really great event.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
Just that today I had the privilege of being the speaker at the Founder's Day luncheon sponsored by the Parent, Teacher, Student Association of PCC, and also to be able to hand out the award for honorary service award, and a great privilege of giving it to Rita Elshot, who just had the courage to put up working for me for 16 years in the city council, so more than deserves it, believe me. But a great event and my privilege of being there.
Thank you so much, Mr. Thompson, especially for representing the board at that as well. Trustee Soto?
None.
Management Association, are there any announcements that you'd like to share? Faculty Senate?
I simply want to take a moment to thank Dr. Mann for coming to the Academic Senate meeting last week and speaking about the student success task force, it was very helpful.
And I don't see, trustee Soto, is there any other student, AS?
To the best of my knowledge, Simon was, either he'll be here later or won't be able to make it because of class conflicts.
And then are there any classified senate representatives that, just piggybacking on the Academic Senate announcement, the one thing I did want to also announce is that the board and the Academic Senate tomorrow are sponsoring a PCC Town Hall on the state budget crisis, featuring an address by Chancellor Jack Scott. We're going to hear straight from the source about what's going on with the state of California and the budget crisis, going to hear about what's happening and the impacts on districts up and down the state, and then the chancellor has specific recommendations, he's encouraging all districts to take in response to what's happening and how we can best prepare ourselves for the continuing challenges in the state budget. I want to thank our partnership with the Academic Senate, as well as the administration in helping us organize that. I understand we'll have a number of individuals from the community, as well as the campus who are planning, I'm looking forward to seeing everybody there. Dr. Rocha, are there any other announcements that you'd like to share?
Yes, thank you, President Baum. Just briefly, I see Dean Cynthia Levo out there, and by recognizing her, I wanted to mention our outreach efforts in the community. Two weeks ago, we had a wonderful meeting of the Latino Advisory Group at Washington Middle School, and as always when we outreach to the community, learned a lot and listened about how we can serve the community still better. And then this past Sunday, I had the great pleasure of being at First AME Church for our Super Sunday. I want to thank Tamika Alexander and Bob Bell and all the good people of the African-American Advisory Group who have helped to put together Super Sunday, actually, Super Sun Days, it started last Sunday, and this Sunday, a number of trustees and administrators will be out at the churches again this week to give the message that we're open and we want to make sure that we enroll and admit as many in district students as possible before the April 1st deadline.
Thank you, Dr. Rocha. We'll move now on to item four, public comment on non-agenda items. I do not have any speaker cards, and so I don't, so we'll move on from that, we'll take our public comment. Now we're moving into a study session, we have a series of items that we, as a board, need to focus on very carefully to prepare the district to meet the needs of students and the challenges that we anticipate in coming years. And so, this first one is focusing on our facilities master plan, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Rocha to begin the study session.
Yes, thank you again, President Baum. I'll be very brief in setting up this introduction for Vice President Van Pelt and our friends from AC Martin and PBWS. And tonight's a special night, we haven't had a study session for a while, and this one is an important one. And you can see around the room, and Rick and the others will fill you in about what all this wonderful input from today was about. But I'd just say ever so briefly that what today is about is how we imagine our future, is about really designing PCC next, and that is, you know, the Centennial, the plan for PCC Centennial in the year 2024, a mere 12 years, a mere dozen years from now. And the only other note is that we had, and I said this to the group this morning, that we had, at breakfast this morning, Rick reminded me that in 1987, when Jack Scott, who will be here tomorrow, powered the first master plan, and it was known as Jack's Master Plan. And then, of course, when Jim Koster took over in 1996, and the master plan that we saw tonight was just finishing up Measure P, and that was Jim's Master Plan. And I wanted to remind everybody today that this master plan is not going to be Mark's Master Plan, that it's starting, it's actually an organic process, and you can see the input that this time, we're going to move forward because Jack and Jim really have done extraordinary work to get us this far. But one thing that certainly I see, and I think my colleagues share this, that the assumptions that we held in 1987 and the assumptions that we had in 1996 are untenable in the year 2012, as we move forward. And so that means we're going to have to have a broad participation, a wide input, an organic process in which together, the faculty, staff and students help to design the future of the campus, and you can see the great work that they've already done in such a short time. So with that, and again, in expressing my gratitude, I will turn this over to Vice President Van Pelt.
Thank you, and good evening. Let me first introduce the people who are at the table. Richard Thompson is the first one, close to the lectern, he is the principal in charge of urban design with AC Martin Partners. He is a national and international expert in master planning, worked in South Korea, worked in Egypt, worked all over the United States. Next to him is Susan Painter, who's a PhD, former professor, degree in psychology, also with AC Martin Partners. And then Greg Sun, who is a lead accredited professional, and of course, he's the partner in charge with PBWS, who's done a lot of work here as well, and of course, both firms have. Otis Odell, another lead accredited professional, he's the project director with 32 years of experience. And then we have co-chairs of the committees. So the first one is Dustin Hanvey, Dr. Hanvey with the English Division, and he is the Academic Senate co-chair of the Sustainability Committee. And then Coleman Griffith, who is the co-chair with me on the Facilities Planning Committee, and of course, Coleman is with the architecture area within engineering and technology. And next to him is Dr. Al Hutchings of Facilities, who is another lead accredited professional, and he is the co-chair on the management side, the vice president of the Management Association for the Sustainability Committee. So that's the group for this evening. What we intend to do is to briefly go through the material, that should be about 15 minutes, and then what we really want to do is to open it up for discussion. And as Dr. Rocha alluded, we had two sessions today, first one was at nine o'clock this morning, and the second one was at noon with presentations, and then we had breakout sessions. And you can see all the material that was developed was as a result of those two sessions that were well attended by the faculty and by the staff and by the students. We probably had as many students as faculty and staff put together, so it was very well represented, particularly in the afternoon session. So, and I think that the architects will attest to the quality of the ideas, recommendations and thoughts that people had and presented, each one of which were written down, they will be scanned, they will be available on the web, so that even people who were not here will be able to see all that. And then, of course, this is an ongoing process, this is day one, where we launch the ship, and we intend to put all this material together and have breakout sessions in smaller groups with specific focuses in mind throughout the semester. Then during the summer, it will be coalesced, and then when people come back, then we'll present some of these options, and then the goal is to have the facilities master plan back to the Board of Trustees sometime prior to the end of the calendar year. So with that, what we're going to do is the brief presentation, and Richard Thompson will start that, and then I'll do the last part of it.
Thank you, Rick. It's a pleasure to be here, once again, on the campus. As you know, we've been involved quite a long time, we in fact were with Rick, the authors of the master plan in 2000, and are the architects of record for the Arts Center. So we have a real affection for the campus, and so it's great to be back. And I just want to second what Rick said, and that is that I was just totally thrilled with the input we got today. I mean, it was from faculty, students, staff, and it was very thoughtful, more than we could even handle in some ways, because people, you know, talked and talked, and then they had to leave and go other places. But it was a great start, and we're, as Rick said, all this stuff will be available, and it will be informing what we do moving forward. What we gave is a little show, which I'll show you right now, that basically set up a little bit of a background on the campus for those who didn't know much about it, and then described a little bit of information about the five breakout groups. And that was to sort of prime the pump, ask the question, get people thinking about these various aspects of the campus and what it should be in the future, and so when they broke out in the sessions, then we could have these conversations with them. So we started with by kind of going way back to the beginnings of the campus, and our attitudes are, it's always good to go back, take a look where you've been before you decide where you're going to go. So this is the campus when it was a high school, of course, that's building C, D and E, and by the way, the boiler house is still here also, everything else in the picture is not here anymore, but that was in the 20s, this is just an anomaly, it's 1949, and there was a freak snowstorm, I just thought it was a funny picture. But this is the campus, then skip ahead to 1985, and this is before Jack Scott's Master Plan and Jim Koster's Master Plan and where we are today, so there was no library, the two parking structures weren't here, the football field, if you'll notice, was completely oriented to north-south instead of east-west, the gym wasn't there, and the tech building wasn't there, pool wasn't there, the commons wasn't there, so we've come a long, long way since 1985. And I think it's something that PCC can be very proud of, and your reputation, I think, attests to that. Just a little bit about the master plan, these are the components of what we are just now completing with the Center for Art, for the arts, and that bond measure was $150 million, and we have met the goals that were laid out in that master plan and are achieving those as we speak. The highlighted buildings here in tannish color are those buildings that have been completed, and as you know, the building we're in now, the Student Center, is remodeled, not necessarily a new building, but it was a bigger bang for the buck, and it was a good decision, I think. But you can see the parking structure on Bonnie Street, the Arts, Center for the Arts, the tech building all the way to the right there, and then the Student Center bookstore in the foreground on the right. These are just some reminders of not only the buildings that were built in the master plan, but that the things that have come on this campus in the last 15 or so years, and there's been a significant amount of work, the tech building, Lancers Pass, Facilities, bookstore, Student Center, and the Center for the Arts, which is shown here, as well as the Community Education Center, which is of course a satellite. But now we're here today, and so the question that we were asking people who joined us was, what is a campus of the future? What is this campus going to be in 50 years? And what are the components that will be important for us to plan for in the master plan to make sure that happens? As your president says, and I really like it as a statement, PC has a proud past and a global future. And what are the implications of that, by the way? So these are all the kinds of things that we ask people to talk with us about today. There are three components of this master plan, basically three areas of focus. One is modernization and seismic upgrade, which Rick will speak to, and sustainability. You've already got a tremendous initiative going on your sustainability issues, and so you got a real head start there. But in terms of modernization, as you can imagine, the B, the D, E and C buildings are the oldest buildings on the campus, and therefore the ones that kind of need the most help in some ways. And it's not just classrooms, it's restrooms, it's lighting, it's flooring, it's all kinds of things that will bring that building up to speed and make it a modern teaching facility. I think one of the things you can say about those buildings is, they were built to last. You know, they are basically in good shape, they've got some seismic upgrades that need to be done, which Rick will mention, but they're pretty solid buildings for the most part. Not only do we need to upgrade the buildings from a physical point of view, but we also need to address some functional issues and program requirements. As you know, when the Center for the Arts is completed, groups will move in from other parts of the campus, and leaving vacancies and some reshifting will go on, and so that's going to be taking place in the R, D, C and E building. So that will affect also the functional layouts of the building. We also want to look at linkages and so forth and placemaking for the campus as a whole, and I'll talk about that in a second. So these were, the question we asked people was, to help us envision ideal facilities for your work as a teacher, your program as a student, or your program and facilities as an administrator or a staff person on the campus. Rick, did you want to speak to the seismic upgrade?
I'll get there at the end of your presentation.
Okay, all right. The fundamental, once you've set the goals, which are those three components that I mentioned, there are a series of finite objectives. We first of all need to confirm our vision for the future, and that's what this was kicking off today, was asking the campus to help us to define that vision. We have to do that in conjunction with your 2011 academic plan, we have to make sure that our physical master plan, our facilities master plan is in alignment with that and is helping you achieve the goals that you've established in that academic plan. We also need to establish enrollment growth, whether it's, what's the scale of that, because that has other implications we have to address. And then from a specific building point of view, these are the kinds of components that we'll be looking at. First of all, as you know, there's been a number of seismic studies on the U Building, so that building needs to be replaced. So we're calling it here, and this is a word that came out from the meetings today, actually, don't call it science, call it STEM building, because it has a number of other components that are more correctly represented that way, I thought it was a good idea. But we're also looking, as I mentioned, at a number of other components, one of which is a new innovation center, and we're looking at the existing site of the W Building as its location, as a preliminary site location. We're also looking at the R Building, C, D and E, as I mentioned, and then other projects that may be determined. And the whole purpose, as you're well aware from the previous master plans, is this becomes the basis, together with the cost estimate that comes out of the master plan, for you then to prepare for a referendum for a bond measure to move and implement that plan. This is the process, a simplified version of it, we're at the very beginning, as Rick mentioned, we're at the starting gate. We go through the process of collecting data, we look at how the campus is organized from the functional point of view after some of the shifts are made, and we'll see if we can streamline some ways of making the campus function better from a locational point of view. We'll define projects carefully so that they can be then costed accurately, and by the way, we're using the same cost estimator on our team that we used back in 2000, and he was right on the money, including the inflationary values that he put in to the plan. He didn't anticipate the construction spike, which went up and then, of course, came back down, but that's the nature of free economy. But, and then we'll finalize the master plan, as Rick said, and over the summer, and come back in the fall and share that information, and then come back to the board for final approval, and then from there you can start your bond measure referendum process. One of the other components is trying to create some real strong open space, outdoor areas on the campus. You have essentially four major open spaces on the campus now, and one that's very underutilized is the one that is basically in front of this building here, I'm not sure if there's a name for that space actually, but, beg pardon. But as you know, it's surrounded by buildings, the face of the R Building is not that friendly, there's some steps up to this building, and while it has some large shade trees, it doesn't have much else to it. And the question, I think, is, from our perspective, what makes a great campus plaza? And there are a lot of ingredients, and they're pretty simple, shade and seating. It's, this is Southern California, and so places to sit in the shade are important. Water is a component that's always important in campus environments, there's a psychology to it that I think is extremely important, there've been lots of studies about that. Food service, let's face it, students run on their stomachs, so, you know, anywhere the food service is, is where they're going to be congregating, so food service is a way you activate a plaza as well. Entertainment, there are opportunities, and lots of them, for that kind of entertainment to go on in an outdoor space that's protected in the campus environment. And finally, and certainly not least, is wireless connections. And that includes, by the way, power connection, so the kids can charge up their laptops as well as get on the internet wirelessly. Those are the ingredients that in our experience really do make campus plazas active and lively and a vital part of the campus. The questions we asked, we had the five categories I mentioned to you, the first one was a question of, what is the 21st century campus? We talked about outdoor, indoor spaces, interdisciplinary programs, which is a trend that's going on all around the country because the professions are now blending. Bioscience is a direct result of the interface between biology and chemistry, and the results of that are different altogether than chemistry or biology would have perceived. Sustainability, you're already well on your way in that regard, wireless technology throughout the campus is kind of a given, and you might ask why this residential needs is an issue that we wanted to talk about, but it relates to the international students on the campus. Right now you have about 1,017 international students, but the recruitment's being hindered by two things, and you can imagine this. A parent in China, thinking about sending their child to the United States to go to school, wants to be sure they have a safe place to live, one that's controlled and monitored by the campus, the university, the college. So without that, it makes recruitment more difficult. We also don't have classroom space, so in, as you move forward, if there's a goal to increase that, and I understand there's a goal to increase international enrollment to about 3,000 or 10% of your enrollment, then those needs need to be addressed in the master plan. So just a couple of images about that indoor-outdoor connections, and in Southern California, this is particularly important. These are both East Coast schools, and yet they relish the springtime, they want to open the doors so that you can go in and out, this happens to be a dining facility, but it works as well with art classes and some even classroom situations. This is an interdisciplinary building at Brandeis University, and they have a number of different programs in the building, but what's more important is they have these wide open kind of connecting spaces where, you know, the chemist can get together with a biologist and have a conversation, and new things come out of that conversation. Students can talk to each other, students can talk to other faculty members, and it's that interaction that is the goal they're trying to get to in that building. That also goes for the way in which you plan, that's why outdoor spaces here on the campus are so important. This is the Mission College Master Plan, and the central focus of that campus, with all the other disciplines that are being taught, is that open space you see in the center there, and that's where they hope that all that interaction will happen. So it's the building level, it's the planning level, it's the large-scale outdoor level, all of which needs to be thought of with this idea of interaction and shared learning that is, I think, a fundamental part of higher education moving into the future. Sustainability goes without saying, this happens to be a campus that was developed in Singapore from the ground up with the fundamental premise of it will be a totally sustainable campus. So they've managed energy, water and social sustainability, which you've already taken some steps with your court referral program, I think is really laudable. The other question, next question we asked was, well, the fundamental building block of any teaching community is the classroom, and what is that? What's a classroom of the future? And the key word is flexible. Need to be able to configure the room for a lecture, or a discussion, or a demonstration, or work groups, and that means flexible seating perhaps, multipurpose furnishings, and then of course, proper sightlines, wireless technology, and all the various kinds of technological components that belong in a modern, state-of-the-art classroom. This is just a couple of examples of some of those modular furniture components that I thought were worth sharing with you. This happens to be a manufacturer, I think Steelcase, that creates this little model of a seat here with a place you can put your bag underneath, it's on rollers, and it's got a desktop that swivels, so you can arrange it around for a lecture, and then you can push them all together in small work groups, so everybody's got a desktop there, face-to-face talking, and it's almost instantaneously the way you can modify the room for a particular teaching situation that either the faculty or students need to adapt. There's also flexible technology, these are shared laptops, you check them in when you come into the class, you put them back and check them back in when you leave, and they can be then in turn connected to shared monitors, and there can be tabletops that are almost like your iPad, so you can blow up pictures and move them around and index and so forth, all of which are state-of-the-art technologies that are being applied in classrooms all around the country and the world, actually. Also, there's oftentimes a need to be able to reconfigure the room for a particular style of teaching. You want to break up into work groups, and you want some tax space next to it, so you pull out some petitions. There are various groups that are developing these, and at Stanford University, this is their demonstration school, where they're actually testing a lot of these manufactured goods in terms of rollout, sliding petitions, there's a garage door pulled down, so that there's glass, but it's not totally enclosed, but they can pull it all the way up and the room is opened, and all this kind of flexible furniture that we were mentioning. And then there's all the various kinds of components of seamless technology, just got a little tour of your command center there, emergency center, and you've got a smart screen in there, you've got all the monitors, all the bells and whistles, that in many ways represent what is being now touted as the requirements for a technologically smart and classroom of the future. Then you've got to always have your standard state-of-the-art lecture halls, these might be slope floor, 120, 150-seat classrooms, and you have a need for those now, and there's actually another one being developed within the Arts, the Center for the Arts, so that'll be another one that'll be added to your repertoire, but they have certain kind of functions, acoustic sightlines, those kinds of things that need to be addressed as you develop those. Then, of course, we knew that the question of an innovation center would come up, what does that mean, what is that? And I think we were trying to describe in general a concept that's still in the development stages. But in general, the idea is that it's an ultimately flexible building that can be used for any number of kinds of teaching pedagogies, and has the flexibility to be able to adapt to that particular type of teaching situation. to that particular type of teaching situation. The classrooms would obviously be state-of-the-art, you would have seminar rooms, conference rooms, the latest technologies, strategies, and so forth, in how various pedagogies are being offered to students. Open and transparent, I think you can tell that if those were all solid walls, the feel in this room would be a whole lot different than having the ability to see sunlight, see the trees outside during the course of, of course, that's a distraction, too, you're probably watching all the trees. But also, there's the potential in this innovation center to open it to the community on weekends, and more importantly perhaps, is to use this as a conference center so that PCC can bring educators from other parts of the nation and around the world here to share their experiences in teaching and educating, and widen the experience and the knowledge level of those of us who are here. So the idea is a grand one, but I think it's a perfect fit for PCC, given your reputation along with Santa Monica College as the two best community colleges in the state and probably in the United States. Just another piece of innovation, Corning Glass Company is just all, is all about innovation in terms of glass. And when it comes to these kinds of things, they're looking at ways to create giant iPads, if you will, where everything is right on that tabletop, you can file it away, you can bring it up, you can print from there. And you can imagine in a teaching situation how that might be of great use to faculty. So this is the campus today, and as you know, these studies here, which PBS, by the way, PBWS has done on the new replacement science or STEM building, would be, the first phase, this is a one-to-one replacement. Your request to the state will be for replacement funds. And then there would be a second and third phase that would allow the building to grow to accommodate future needs going out into the future. And this is the location, at least initially, for the Innovation Center and the old W Building site. One of the thought we had that we'd like to explore and talk about is, perhaps it might move out to the intersection of Hill Street in Colorado, where it may be a new statement for the campus, a new identity for the campus to reflect its move into the 21st century. I think there's some issues that need to be addressed with how to connect that back to the campus, and you've made some improvements there already, so how do you deal with that? What do you do with the parking? But it's certainly one of the things that we'll be examining as we move forward. Accessibility was another issue we wanted to talk about because the goal of the campus is to reach universal design, which means, basically, the entire campus is accessible to everyone. And that means people who are physically handicapped, sight handicapped, or hearing impaired. And all those things have different ways you have to treat them, you're working at this and have been for some time. So what we wanted to make sure is that it's a part of the master plan going forward so that we can complete some of the things that you've already started and make sure the campus is, in fact, accessible. I'll turn it over to Rick here.
Okay. Seismic upgrades. Some boards over there in the far corner. This is the W Building, and in order to strengthen the W Building seismically, in the event that we choose to keep it and not put the Innovation Center there, we'd have to strengthen one of the walls for sheer capacity to resist the lateral earthquake forces, and then strengthen some of the columns. And then above the old gymnasium, that roof line would have to be fixed and made more stiff. With the D Building, there are interior walls that would have to be strengthened, and again, the roof would have to be strengthened in order to make that building more secure. E Building, of course, is the sister building to the D Building, and it has precisely the same issues, where we have to lock in the walls better to the roof structure, and then we have to put a diaphragm on the roof. The O and P Buildings, now, it's not the observatory portion, it's the planetarium portion. The planetarium ceiling itself, which, of course, is where the projected images are shot, that ceiling has to be replaced because it's not seismically sound. The O Building itself, the observatory, is fine. And then the C Building has a number of issues where walls have to be strengthened for sheer capacity. And when we were in Saxon Auditorium, we discussed the fact that the ceiling has to be replaced in Saxon, and we have to increase the sheer capacity of that building as well. Okay, in terms of sustainability, I'm not, this has been well-presented already, so I'm not going to dwell on this. I did send out a report about the sustainability and all the various different component parts that make this up, so I'm not going to spend any time here. Certainly, if there are any questions, we can answer them. But I did want to show this. In terms of water usage, HCF is 100 cubic feet, and what you can see is that in the past few years, we have dropped our water usage by 30%. So we're tracking well under where we have been tracking for water usage, and we believe that we will continue to do so as we find better technologies. Electrical demand, this is our current electrical demand chart on a summer weekday, and with the addition of the fuel cell, that will create a baseload of 800 kilowatts, so that will handle what we need throughout the night and the baseload during the day. If we were to install solar, we'd be able to fill up that section, and what that then leaves is the area that passing the water and power would have to provide. Now, it is possible, and what we need to work on is to reduce the electrical demand and lower that red line. We can also increase the solar capacity so that it would shoot past the red line, at which point we would have net metering, and essentially our meter would run backward and at least partially offset the passing of water and power component. Now, I also wanted to talk about the funding sources. We have a chart up, which we had up all day. The possible funding sources break into five different choices. District capital outlay funds, the probability that we will be able to come up with, you can see the bottom number of 250 to 300 million dollars, is, I put probability is low, but the reality is, it's pretty much non-existent to come up with that amount of money. We do think that conceivably, we could come up with 2 to 5 million dollars somewhere. The district could also borrow the money. The probability of doing that is also low, because, of course, we'd have to pay it back, and it would be paid back out of unrestricted general funds. Conceivably, you could come up with 10 or 20 million dollars if that was what the district chose to do. District and foundation fundraising, we think that there's a high probability we can fundraise, of course, but we don't think that we're going to get anything close to the full amount, but it seems reasonable to get 5 or 10 million dollars. State bond, and I'll point out that the two graphics over there in the corner that show the replacement for the U Building for the STEM Building, we did do that work on the basis that in order to stand in line at the state level, you have to go to that level of detail. And we worked with Dr. Douglas and with his faculty and with the nursing faculty in order to derive the fundamental plan that at least allowed us to stand in line. So we do not have the money to build that, we have not spent any money other than the design work in order to be able to request the money from the state. And if we were to get the money from the state, it would require a bond passage at the state level, and it would bring us probably 40 to 50 million dollars. And then the, if the district were to seek another general obligation bond, we believe that we can raise between 200 and 250 million dollars. Methodology to do that is, and we've gone to our bankers to find out what the options would be. If you recall, for Measure P, we promised the voters that we would not exceed $25 of assessment per $100,000 of assessed valuation. So if a person owned a $400,000 house, it would mean $100 maximum per year for the term, although it would slide down as the bonds were amortized. In this case, what you'll see is that the teal color, the first color, is Measure P, and you can see that that number's being amortized down now. So if we were to go to the voters and say, for no additional money past what we asked for before, $25 per 100,000 of assessed value, what we can do is then we could fill in that gap, and the other colors, the fuchsia and the white and the yellow, blue, and red, would be five different series, each being 50 million dollars. And it's possible, therefore, to, our borrowing capacity through a general obligation bond would be 250 million dollars by doing this. That does not exceed the $25 per 100,000, and it does bring us 250 million dollars. Now, those numbers can actually increase, and it depends on what interest rates do over the next few years and during the term, but we're very confident, and I spoke again today with our bankers, to see that these numbers are consistent with our ability to go out for a general obligation bond. And with that, we're open to any questions and certainly the discussion of the board.
Good. I have a number of questions, but I want to allow each of the board members to have an opportunity to ask some questions, but the, and the only question I'll start off, but then I have a number of more detailed questions, is what is the process that you envision going forward with the facilities master planning process for the board to take action on it? At what point are we looking for the board? What is the board going to be asked to do and consider?
Go ahead, Rick.
What we're going to do is, this is the kickoff, today is day one, and then we're going to collect information, we're going to synthesize what we got, we're going to start to formulate that and put it together into options. We're going to be having group meetings across the campus to zero in on some of these points and the various different major projects and smaller projects. Accessibility is one of them that we talked about today. As an example, there's an accessibility committee. There will be an open space, there will be a public art. All the various different components of the master plan will be fleshed out, at which point it'll coalesce during the summertime. During the fall time, we will then come forward with additional options and so forth. That will be windowed through, and then the Board of Trustees, we will ask for an approval on the facilities master plan prior to the end of the calendar year.
Okay. So you'll, the next official action, or the only official action the board would be taking would be at, by the end of the year, you'd, we'd be voting on a proposed facilities master plan for the district.
Well, that would be the action, however, there's going to be input along the way.
Right, right. No, but I'm talking about specific action.
Yes.
Okay. I want to allow each board member to have the opportunity to ask questions, and then we'll continue on for a dialogue.
One other question, Rick, could you put the slide up that shows the aerial of the campus?
Okay, we'll start with Dr. Mann.
I actually don't have questions. Well, I do have one question, but I do have a couple of comments I would like to make. This is part of the input that I want to go to the committee, and it has to do with the proud past component. I think Trustee Martin and I were both on the board when we did the first master plan and the second master plan. I don't really agree with that that was Jack's plan and Jim's plan, but if that's the way the campus sees it, whom I'd say that wasn't...
I think it was 2000 and 2010 is where I remember the names on those.
Right. But I, the, but I want to go back and talk a little about the first master plan. Some of you may not be aware, it's my understanding PCC was one of the first community college district to have a master plan. And when we interviewed Jack and said, you know, this place is, looks dreary, rundown, et cetera, how would you go about revitalizing this campus and turn it towards the 21st century? And one of the things he suggested was, we should have, we should develop a master plan. And we hired a master planner who had just completed the master, this is my recollection, now someone may dig around if I misremember it, who had completed the master plan for Caltech. And he actually came and worked with us and did come up with a master plan. But what struck me, I remember the one thing most about that, was he said, you have one historical building that you should try to save, actually, it was two at that time, two historical structures that you should try to save that have a historical value, and one, one historical structure or structures which has tremendous aesthetic value, and you should try to save those. The historical structures were the smokestack, which actually fell as a result of an earthquake, and we tore it down. The other one was the Einstein Observatory, the only observatory dedicated by Albert Einstein, and that's the only really historical structure, the only structure on this campus of any historical value, according to the master planner. The second was the quad, and it's the only art deco quad on any campus in the United States because very little building was done in the 1930s because of the recession. And so at that point, we decided to take the elements of the quad, and you see them in all the new buildings, and have kind of a uniformity and use that as our theme. So one of the things, if we're going to continue proud past, I hope we continue to preserve the observatory and to, if possible, to at least keep some kind of a memory, at least, of the historical quad. And I think the elements have worked very well introducing these elements into the buildings. For example, for those who weren't here, one of the things we did was we repainted the buildings at his suggestion, so that there's a consistency of color, and it made a tremendous difference. And I've been very happy to see, the time I've been on the board, some of the really ugly buildings that were built before the 1930s have, are gone. They weren't as well-built, and that we have the new buildings and that we are kind of keeping this. And I think if we want to keep our theme, we should keep that, keep that in mind. But particularly, I was very pleased to hear that there's nothing wrong with the observatory because I think that's, that it doesn't take up much space, and we should try to keep it at all costs. The second thing I would like to say, and I've got three points, that was the first one, actually, I've got four. The second thing I would like to say is, I think we should really consider enrollment growth. It's my understanding that there is something called like tidal wave, too, this huge group of high school students that have come in, but if you look in elementary schools, enrollment is down. You can project how many children you're going to have in the entering a class in college by looking at how many first graders you have, how many second graders. I know there's discussion on the state level that we may soon be looking at enrollment declines. And particularly in the Student Success Task Force, we had people that came to say, be really careful when you start rationing access, because it may not be too long till you're going to be out beating the bushes to try to get that. So I think we need to, that should be part of our planning. I'm not saying it isn't, but from the very beginning, I think we need to really, really look and plan as carefully as possible to decide what, how many students we are actually should have and can have, and what the projections are, say, in 20 years of how many students that there will be. The second thing on flexibility, I really, really like this, your points, I think we should certainly stress this, but I, and I'm sure the architects here would know this, but years ago, I was in Southern Wisconsin and visited a very small elementary school. It was up on a hill, and it had all these skylights, and it was the altible, flexible school, where you had all the kinds of things, except without for the technology of flexible use of space, changing the chairs, doing all these things. And it was designed, I think, in the 1880s by Frank Lloyd Wright, where his aunts, whom he lived with, was involved with this school. So I think that's a very good thing, it's not, certainly it's not a new concept, so I think we can go on that. And the last point I'd like to raise is, and this probably may sound like a little, well, I'm just going to say it. I don't remember the board ever discussing that 10% of our students should be international students. And I think that is clearly a policy decision, and before we start any kind of planning with those kind of numbers, I would like to have a full discussion of this. I remember one time the board discussed that we would keep the number of international students at around 1,000, and apparently, that's where we were, 1,017, I think I heard. So I, it's not that I'm for it or against it, it may be a great idea, having housing for international students, having international students housed. Many universities have this, and it's a great thing, but I really think that is a, something that we should make sure the board is involved in from the very beginning.
Is there anybody that would like to address some of the points that Dr. Mann raised? How do you envision...
Just to clarify things, I may have misspoke about the goal for the international students.
Okay.
That was at a discussion table where I was, and there was somebody who sounded relatively authoritative about that, so I may have misspoke, but...
Yeah, and the, you know, the international students is, there isn't a specific goal, but it's embedded in the Edmaster Plan, and the board will recall that last year, the Budget Committee in developing the budget had looked at a number of options, including revenue generation, and had listed the possibility, not the certainty, of possibly looking at international students for two reasons. Number one, to continue to globalize the campus and the education and the experience, but also as a revenue source. So that was placed in the budget process last year, and... And international students is in the process of taking a look at that. And of course, whenever we have a plan, it'll, you know, come forward for consideration and of course, approval.
Mr. Martin?
Okay, I have several comments slash questions. I'm going to start with a quick story. This last, beginning of school, my daughter attended an athletic event in the gymnasium at Beverly Hills High School. And you may or may not remember that Beverly Hills High School gymnasium was the one where they filmed It's a Wonderful Life, and it's the one where the gym floor separates with the pool underneath. And I just thought this was fantastic. I'm at the place where they filmed The Wonderful Life and they have this gym floor and they still use it? And they still use the pool? And I'm in this beautiful building and they've done, it's a very old building, they've done a wonderful job of renovating it. And I'm just like, this is just amazing. It's just amazing. And I was talking to some of the parents of the Beverly Hills High players, discussing how wonderful this is. And it turns out of the three or four parents I talked to, they had attended Beverly Hills High School themselves. And now their children are going to Beverly Hills High. And each one of them commented how significant that gymnasium was to them. And then they immediately said, and our children hate it. Our children hate Beverly Hills High because everything that I love about it, the old nostalgic, the significance and all these things, is the exact things that they hate. And I bring that up as a significant point, that when I think of how to plan a master campus, I naturally think, I want areas where people come together and talk, where people come together and share ideas. I'm the guy that won't use the phone to conference call anybody else in my, even when they're in another building. I just like to walk over and lean against their doorpost and say, hey, I got an idea, you got a couple of minutes. That's me. My children, on the other hand, text me from their bedrooms asking questions about something in the house. So my daughter, who's in seventh grade, studies with her friend every night, her homework. They do their homework together, only they're both on their laptops looking at each other's pictures with half the screen on the picture of, down here in the little corner is her friend, and up here is the homework assignment that was assigned online. And they're looking at each other, talking, and they're saying, well, you know, but in this part over here, and the other one's saying, yeah, but on that part over there. It's a total, it's totally different. And so as we start to think about what we're going to do in the future, my first concern is that we don't build the next equivalent of the Maginot Line, where in France, they built the walls to stop the infantry and the tanks went around. And I'm wondering if the first question that this whole study was predicated on, if it shouldn't have been asked at a little higher level. I am thrilled with where we're going with this. I'm thrilled with the flexibility. But all the flexibility that you mentioned is based on a flexibility of us being here on this campus. And yes, if we get here to this campus, the flexibility is fantastic to accommodate whatever we want to accommodate. But maybe there's a bigger level of flexibility. Maybe there's a level of flexibility that says, you don't have to be on this campus. Maybe my way of appreciating education where we sat around together and talked is not the way our students of the future, much less even now, are thinking. Maybe whether we want 3,000, 10,000, or 20,000 international students isn't a function of if they're in the United States at all. There's another layer of flexibility. When we went out to the educational master plan, and we went out into each of the communities, my community said, PCC is a wonderful place. We think the buildings you've done there and the way you've renovated it, it's phenomenal. Yes, I have a lot of old people that went to PCC when they were my age and hit their head on the pipe going through down to the gym. But anyway, they think what we've done is fantastic. They just say, you know, the only issue for us is just getting there. We just wish it was closer. And we made a thrust into online education. And that thrust in online education has brought PCC closer to my district in a very low cost, in a very low cost way. So I'm concerned, my question slash comment is, maybe instead of starting with the picture that we saw, 1934, a couple of buildings, black and white, maybe we should start with the Pasadena area Community College District. Maybe we should start with the nation or the world and say, how do we reach the next generation of PCC students at that level of flexibility, whether they're here or not? That's my concern going forward. The final comment I'll make on that is, a fellow trustee works for the University of Laverne, and he and I share stories periodically. The University of Laverne is working on a pilot program that is exactly like that, where the teacher might be at the University of Laverne, but he's teaching 20 students who he's looking at online, and they're looking at him, and they're looking at the board. But those 20 students, none of them are physically on the campus of the University of Laverne. And they're interacting. And he's drawing on their, on his smartboard, and it's showing up on their computer screen wherever it is. So I'm concerned that, I mean, I love the idea and I love the flexibility of the chairs and all of that, it's fantastic. And we will never, you know, being here, there'll never be a replacement for being here, and there will always be some instruction, of course, that's here. But to put $250 million into here, when it's the Maginot Line of education, because the next issue goes around physical space and location into wherever you are in the world, that's my concern.
Anybody like to respond to some of the issues raised by Mr. Martin?
Can I make a comment?
Go ahead.
It's a very interesting point, and one that's being debated all around the country at educational institutions or institutions of higher education. And this has been going on for the last 15 years in discussions about distance learning and so forth. And there were various experts who suggested that the physical campus would be an obsolete thing in the next 15 years. And what's happened over the last 15 years is that, yes, there has been distance learning, but it has gone up and down and sort of settled in at about 10 to 12% of the student populations at various institutions around the country. And that may change. It may go up more and it may go, you know, to higher levels and so forth as the technology has even improved more so that it's real time and all those kinds of things. But one of the things that also I think institutions discovered was that the value of the higher education that, you know, our country provides now and is the model for the rest of the world, is really based on, as much on the interaction between your fellow student, your faculty member that you meet on the courtyard and those kinds of things as it is in the classroom. And that kind of face-to-face thing needs to happen in a place. And so I think that, yes, there needs to be a balance so that you are addressing those things and you are flexible to be able to address those more modern technological ways in which teaching will be handled. But I think there is real value in the whole idea of a place where you go and you interact with your fellow students, your faculty on a one-on-one basis. And one of the things I think many experts have also begun to discuss is that the more we put ourselves into silos with the computer, the less of that interface that happens and we become less human as a result of that. Now, you can agree or disagree with that, but I think there's a lot of psychologists that are concerned about those kinds of things as well. I'm not suggesting one way or the other, but I'm suggesting that we need to develop a master plan that is flexible in all of those areas and that can respond as technology changes and things go more that way, you're able to address that. At the same time, be able to address the physical issues of having students come here. And for the next 15 to 20 years, I would say that they're probably still going to be coming here for the most part in terms of, you know, the teaching pedagogy.
A quick follow-up. And I certainly, I am one, as I try to articulate, I'm not saying that I'm pushing this agenda. I'm, because I'm one that likes to talk with people face-to-face. But I'm also concerned that as I see what is happening today and the success of private for-profit institutions who are delivering an online instruction, you know, there will be a, there will be a function that people sometimes vote with their feet or their pocketbooks in this. And as much as we, like the parents of Beverly Hills High, believe that this is heaven, if the next generation doesn't agree with us, we could be in trouble. And so I'm not really trying to purport that we throw away a master plan completely and think about online instruction and all that. But I am saying that if we're talking $250 million, if we're talking this level of magnitude, there should be, this capability should be in that discussion. It seems it should be integrated into the master facility plan discussion. And even to the extent if what we're trying to do is get people together, maybe we should contemplate, as my district was saying, rather than putting it all in one spot, more of a PCC à la Starbucks, smaller satellites, where people can come together more easily because they can get to them more accessibly and have that kind of interaction rather out in the community in several different places, a PCC Lite with a coffee shop and all those kinds of, and water features and shade. And to have that interaction where people may better take advantage of it and be more encouraged to leave the computer behind and actually come out and see what, you know, feel, shake a hand and feel what real skin feels like again.
Mr. Phil.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up, and I think Trustee Martin makes some very good points. And being a university professor, by students' junior year, what we've taught them as freshmen is obsolete today. And we're teaching them, we don't know what careers are going to be out there, we don't know, we're teaching students that the careers will be different, the technology's not even out there to solve the problems that they're going to be dealing with. So I think, I like what Mr. Martin says, I'm a very big proponent of online. That is the future. And today I was walking across campus at the university to go to the library, and Vice President stopped me and says, where are you going? I said, the library. He says, why don't you just access it from your office? And I believe libraries are a thing of the past, to be honest with you. And we're talking about 2050 with these plans. Most of us are going to be looking from the heavens about how PCC will look then. But it's going to be much different. And I like this concept of these little Starbucks Lite. The future is going to be much different. And I think we should build a campus that is different from any campus in the United States and be very futuristic because it is a much different world. And I've been doing a lot of studies about the students of today and what we call the millennials, millennials. And they're much different from any generation in history, and these people want to be involved. That's why they come to our meetings, who want to be involved in policymaking. And they want online and they want to be interactive with other students across the world. And basically, the new classroom of the future is going to be interacting with students in China, in Japan, in Europe. And we've got to build classrooms for the, for that. So I think we should keep in mind, online is going to become more prevalent. The university is not going to be obsolete, but it's going to be a much different atmosphere. I have professors who never walk foot on campus anymore. They teach from home. And so it's going to be much different. But you make some very good points. Thank you.
Trustee Soto.
So I guess the word for tonight is flexibility when it comes to a lot of this, both in the classroom and outside of the classroom. And I think the idea of independent satellite colleges, PCC Lite, for example, as everyone's been naming it now, I think that is a good idea in terms of getting closer to where people are. And I think, I believe they showed it on the slides too, just distance learning is a part of this whole master plan to begin with. So it's not like it is forgotten. Perhaps, maybe we should relook at it and examine what exactly we mean by distance learning. And I think that is a fair and good conversation that we should have because Dr. Phil brings up the good point that my generation, the millennials, we really do want things to come to us. But we are a generation that likes to have it all. We want to be, because even now I see students, and I hear from everyday students that I have in classrooms that aren't even involved here, don't know what's happening on campus, but there is that need. For example, the pictures showing umbrellas in the quad and all that, and centering things around the quad, I think that's something that, from what I'm hearing from students, as much as we're moving to an online world, students still want that. Students still want to have that kind of center to come communicate. I think the points that have been brought up in our general communication style as a generation are true to a point, but we are, we look to technology to enhance that communication, to have it be not just when we see each other in person, but all the time. And I think that's really the point that needs to be made, that students will want to be able to make sure that they can have access to their professors and everything. And I think moving in terms of, and just pedagogically, moving in terms of hybrid classes that allow information to be put online, not just distance learning classes, but all classes, I think that'll kind of address some of the points that were raised here too.
Mr. Thompson, would you like to?
Well, I think as a future agenda item, as a part of this study, it would be very interesting to take a look at for-profit colleges. My understanding, and I don't pretend to be accurate about this, but what I'm told is, yes, they are profitable, but do they really educate? And I think that's the real question right there. And so I'm not, I just think it'd be interesting to do an analysis of that and have an agenda topic where we could really dig into that and analyze that and evaluate it. PCC Lite, yes, there's benefits of that. There's also some challenges associated with that because the more locations we have facilities, the more expensive it's going to be, the more challenging it's going to be. And I think you'll lose too, some of the collegial experience. You go to college to socialize, to get to know people. And I think that's really critical in our nation, that we don't lose sight of that. So again, I think that would have to be evaluated carefully. That is, however, I think, a fundamental issue as we start down the process of a master plan because we're either going to go in that direction or we're going to stay on-site here and prepare for the 100th anniversary of 2024 here, as opposed to in various different locations within the passing geographic area that we represent. The final point I would say is that in terms of residential, while it would be good for international students, I understand completely how important it is to have a place for international students to live, because if you're a mother or a father in China or Germany or wherever it is, you kind of want to know where your child is going to be living if they go to Pasadena City College. On the other hand, though, that's going to have tremendous, or potentially at least tremendous impacts on the residents who live around existing PCC. And as Mr. Martin and Dr. Mann will remember, we had some parking issues a few years ago that we had to address because of the concern and annoyance by residents, that was created on residents by people parking, et cetera. And we now, today, have parking facilities that have alleviated, or at least in good measure, alleviated that problem. So that's got to be brought into the picture for consideration as well. But I think that's an exciting venture, and I'd like to really look forward to being a part of going forward with it. I think there are some issues that have to be decided early on as we plan for the next 12 years.
I'd like to let each trustee have a chance to ask questions before we do that. I'd like to let each trustee have a chance to ask questions before we do that.
This is quite a conversation, and I think there are definitely two sides of this coin, which I think should be looked at really closely. I agree that our buildings need to be, you know, brought up to update, but again, when we talk of two-hundred-and-fifty million dollars, that's a lot of money. And I definitely think what trustee Martin had to say makes a lot of sense, including the student trustee. I think this is something that we should really give some thought. Now, I don't think, for no reason, we would get rid of our master plan, I think we need one, but the scale of the work may be something we need to look at, because we may not need to do all what we're saying. But we really need to investigate this, maybe do some further research, and really get a good understanding of what we're going to do, because this is a lot of money. And again, if you have a beautiful home, but the students are not happy, what have you accomplished? So I think we need to give it some thought.
Trustee Wa.
As I listened to the presentation, I, you know, I also was thinking about the flexibility and kind of brought to mind, you know, the Steve Jobs story, there was a lot of bruhaha about how he went to China and that's where the iPhones are manufactured. But the story was, he went there because when the iPhone, they were getting ready to release it, and it was like two or three weeks before the release, and he realized that the glass was scratching in his pocket, and so he went, he couldn't, he was not going to let the iPhone get released, and so he went to the manufacturer in China, and within two weeks, they retooled the whole plant to produce this, this tempered glass that doesn't scratch. And so I, I wonder, you know, I didn't hear a lot about capacity, and I hear like from the students that are trying to get into classes, but if they only had five more seats, you know, they could have gotten to the class, and, and if the instructor would allow it, if we could change our capacity. But, you know, just in the physical plant, you know, could we build that, I wonder about the flexibility, how quickly could we retool some of those classes? And then just on a little more technical side, as I'm staring at this picture, I'm like looking at all of these parking lots and like, you know, I'm not sure, you know, I, and I didn't hear anything where we are addressing those kinds of structures. I hope, as a college, one of the things that we're looking at for the future is how we, we make this a more transit-friendly college so that the students can get back and forth. And, you know, I, I don't see many cyclists around, and I'm not sure that this is a very friendly atmosphere for cyclists to come around. So, you know, I'm hoping that we look at those kinds of facilities that really help the students get access.
It's interesting you mention those things. If you'll read some of the notes around, there was a whole lot of comments about bicycle-friendly and storage areas and pathways and those kinds of things, and, and also comments about flexibility and class size and things like that. Some of that's difficult to address when the classroom size is already fixed in terms of the buildings we have, some expansion and so forth and so on. But some of these flexible furniture systems may be able to provide that kind of four- or five-seat increase in the size of a classroom if a teacher will agree to teach X number of, of students. So there may be some ways we can address that, so that when situations occur, and we all know, you've been on the board, I remember some of you for a long time, so you've seen the budgets and the state go up and down and up and down and the funding for the, for the campus. So that's another kind of area of flexibility, if you will, that we need to think about, is how we would address the next downturn that happens and be able to continue to provide the services that you provide and meet the student needs that, that you have.
And we are, we are also working very hard on the bicycle-friendly. What is the, the group that we're working with now?
We're currently in the application process with Bike Friendly America, where our campus will be designated as a bike-friendly campus. We're in the application stage of that right now.
Okay, so I have a few questions before we go to other questions, and then we'll, we'll go into others, but I actually have some questions, too, and I appreciate the presentation, and it provided a good overview of some things to consider. I don't consider this a plan or even a concept, it's just like one of the things you want to get the table, on the table to get the conversation going, is what I'm presuming it was, and so. I wanted to know just some principles about the planning process, and my understanding is, we adopted an educational master plan, how is that, how is the educational master plan informing the facilities' master planning process? Because I, I see that as one, that, that, that it has to be wholly in, in alignment with what we adopted as our facilities' master plan. So how is that happening?
We're, we're trying to integrate not only the educational master plan to the facilities' plan, we're doing the enrollment plan in with the budget and resource allocation plan. So we're making great efforts, this semester particularly, to, to tie those functions. There's no point having a facilities' master plan that is not data-driven, and therefore the educational master plan is where we're headed. This is the first time of the three master plans, this being the third, that we've had an educational master plan ahead of the facilities' plan. And of course, that is the fundamental point of having an educational master plan, is it is the exact document that needs to inform the facilities.
So as it goes forward, you're going to come back to us and say, we recommend these facilities based on the instructional and educational priorities that you adopted in the educational master plan?
Yes, correct.
And if I may, and Rick, if you can go to the slide that shows the, the red box process, you know, that leads to board approval. One thing that's different in the, in the development of this master plan is that we do have an ed master plan, and if I could boil the ed master plan down to a single word that has changed over the previous two master plans, it's called graduation. The college that we planned in nineteen eighty-seven and nineteen ninety-six was, in all things, to everyone, all access, all the time, all courses, and so on and so forth. What has utterly changed is that one word, is we're now trying to build a campus in which we're bringing students in and trying to move them through into a program and get them through and on to their next destination. So it's a, so I think the question is absolutely to the point. And then this, again, serves as a kind of a lattice work, you can see where the, the data will be plugged in, and the overall and precinct planning is the actual, you know, user group and the plugin of the, of the ed master plan. But I think that that's, I mean, for me, and this is my own personal translation of it, and that's what, that's what's changed, you know, if you will, that's the seismic retro threat, is how do you build a college that will graduate students in thirty-six months?
And that's what I'm hoping to hear, and I'm looking forward to hearing more about. The next is just, again, the process question, too, and I want to hear from the faculty representatives as, as well, because this process won't be successful without, I believe, the primary engagement of the faculty, because when we looked at 2024, the ones who are going to be here are the faculty that are here now. The, the students that are here today won't be here in 2024, the trustees who are here today may not be here in 2024. But when you look at that campus of nineteen eighty-five, many of those faculty are here today who were here in nineteen eighty-five, that, and so, so I want to, I want to know how we're getting meaningful participation primarily from the faculty in this facilities' planning process.
Well, if I can answer regarding the facilities' master plan, well, the committee, it's a shared governance committee, of course. I'm the co-chair of the committee. Rick and I prepare agenda together. We conduct the meetings together, and we have a good participation, not just from faculty, but from staff and students as well on the committee. Today, I believe the success was really a reflection of the way that we have conducted those, those meetings, and it was very inclusive. We had really, actually, the thing that was very exciting is we had a significant number of students here and sharing their thoughts, and we listened, and we all came away from it with some new thoughts. So, I don't know, from my, from, from my own standpoint, I'm very pleased.
That's really gratifying. Dustin, did you have something you wanted to add?
I'd like to build on something that was said earlier. I've talked to my students about this issue in the past, and I was very surprised to find out that many of them actually really do crave that face-to-face connection with their instructors. All these sayings about the generation may be a bit overstated, they often crave for it and really gain a lot from it. I think I've made some of my best impact on people, and they've told me so years later, when I actually had them in my office, sat down and, and talked to them about their concerns, about my class or their future. So we want to design a campus that students will want to come to, and that includes bike friendliness, classrooms that are innovative and flexible, so they won't, they'll see if I'm actually getting something extra if I don't just sit in front of my screen at home, but actually come and meet face-to-face with my fellow students and my instructor. But students really do crave that, according to many, many times I've talked to them in the classroom about it.
Go ahead.
I'm, I'm sorry, just a quick comment. I, I would like to concur with what Dustin has, has found with his students. I've found the same thing true, too. Students enjoy the community aspect of learning, which is the face-to-face part. And in some of the breakout sessions that I was involved in today, the students actually talked about that. The things that they brought up were kind of, again, more innovative ways of looking at this, it's not just simply within the classroom, it's breaking outside of the classroom, but it wasn't about leaving the campus, so to speak. There is something about having a collegial environment where you have colleagues that you can't duplicate in a Starbucks, I mean, as much, I understand the notion of, of reaching out, which is fantastic, but I think we have to find really innovative ways of reaching out to the community to make people feel a part of what, that permeability and the accessibility that we are. But I think we really need to underscore the community in community college and, and make that, make this a vibrant place that people would want to come to.
Go ahead, Dustin.
I've talked to several of my colleagues about the ways that our campus is even designed. The example is, someone mentioned a silo earlier, we are often in our divisions in silos, and I've talked to faculty in other divisions, and it's often seems like they don't really know anybody in other divisions. And one of my colleagues, Katie Rodriguez, has mentioned the idea that maybe instead of having us divided by English, natural sciences, business, and so on, faculty's offices should be designed around core pathways or core curriculums, where basically people would come in, there'll be a math person there, there'll be an English person there, there would be a science person there. And I think that innovative kind of conversation that could happen across divisions could actually, again, encourage students to want to come here. I leave it to the architects to design those spaces, but spaces where, again, our offices are much more flexible than instead of sitting in like these little kind of cubicles that we often sit in now.
You've said a couple of things that's got, got me very, did you have something very quickly you wanted to add?
I just, I just wanted to mention that not only were there students here today, but we had a lot of faculty members here, and we had faculty members who brought their students.
Great.
And so there was quite a bit of discussion about, I was dealing with classroom of the future, and all of those sheets came from the faculty and the students, and people were talking about the new ways that they are already teaching and what kind of facilities would work for those new ways.
Right, because I, I want that process that happened today to be the process that is, is throughout this planning process, so that when we come to the end, it wasn't just, you talked to us at the beginning, and then all of a sudden we were presented a plan. But what got me really excited about what you just said was the, the fact that you talked about the students and how it will enhance your instruction, because you know, we all know, that at some, one board meeting coming sooner than we hope, there'll be a line of people at that podium saying, why are you focusing on buildings and not focusing on students? And you're, you're devoting all your energy to building buildings, and it doesn't help students. I'm looking forward to the time, I see what we're trying to do is build you the canvas that then you can go in and do the magic of instructing students, so that you can go in and have that magical moment where that spark is lit, and, and that, that classroom that, that, that has the, the tools that you need to connect and educate. And so that's how I see it, and I hope that message continues on throughout the campus, so that when those who want to question why we focus on facilities as opposed to access or, or course sections, that's, that's something that I feel is, is a statement of this community's support and belief and investment in the work that you're going to be doing and your colleagues are going to be doing to educate students now and in the future. I have a couple of other questions, though, too. Going back to just the, I only saw the map of our campus, and, and others have raised this, how are we, how are we factoring the city's economic development plans into our planning process with respect to, are the neighborhoods surrounding and, and facilities and developments at the Ford plant and others? You didn't bring up CEC at all, and, and how we're going to integrate that into our plan. So how are we factoring those cities' plans and maybe as a place to also leverage additional resources for support and development, as well as partnerships with local commercial developers who are looking at providing resources and services that our students and our faculty and our community can benefit from? How is that being incorporated in the plan?
We're working pretty closely with the city of Pasadena in terms of the neighboring areas, particularly, you mentioned the Ford property, as well as some other properties that are either on the market or soon will be on the market. So in terms of providing residential housing, for example, that we don't own and we don't operate, we're discussing two different options with the city of Pasadena now. So we, we're very close to the city in terms of what's going on here. In terms of how we, we factor CEC, today there were a number of conversations around the tables with CEC. So this is the starting point, this, we're not halfway through the process, where we have set ideas in mind, this is gathering information so that we can synthesize it and then develop those further. So CEC today was discussed on any number of occasions.
So I'm, I'm hoping that, that as we make the case to the community, that we've, we've gotten the alignment of, of that this really fits squarely within where the city's hoping we go, and the city's ready to, to support it in one way or the other. I know we don't have redevelopment funds anymore to, to tap into, but there's that option. My last, then, question is going to be on the, making, making sure that this is done in a way that the community feels that this investment is necessary. Speaking to Mr. Martin's point about, a lot of people will look at this and say, seventy percent of the people that go to PCC don't even live in my district, so why should I use, why should I pay money out of my pocket to benefit students who aren't even in my, in my community? And Dustin mentioned the, the pathways plan. Are we looking at, will the plan include some outreach to local school districts to, to strengthen our own pathways programs? And is there, is, are there, is there an opportunity to, to partner in, in facilities that could be included in this plan, that with our local feeder districts, there are some capital projects that might help facilitate, you know, early to high, early college to high, high school to college programs and other pathway programs that could be all spread throughout the district, so that everybody, that there's a sense that the community has an investment in, 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 in PCC that they want to support?
No, and I think that's a really good point, and Susan's taking notes. No, absolutely, this is a part of the equation. We, the educational master plan is very clear at that point in any event, and the facilities' plan is going to support the educational master plan.
And the educational master plan, as I recall, is increasing in district enrollment.
Yes, that's true.
And, and creating pathways.
Right.
And I'd like to see that manifested somehow within the facilities' master plan in doing that. Okay, and so John had a point.
I had a few, and I'm going to reiterate a few things I said, but I'm going to say very succinctly to make some clarifying points. Number one, in part to what trustee Thompson said, what I'm asking for is a discussion, to be included in the discussion, a flexibility that doesn't limit us to the physical space between Colorado and Del Mar. It is not an all-or-nothing suggestion. I'm not saying, forget PCC as it is here, go totally PCC Lite, satellite distant, and I'm not saying that. I'm saying we're talking about two-hundred-and-fifty million dollars, we're talking about students who are yet to be born that will look at things differently, and nowhere in this short presentation was there any discussion of flexibility beyond the campus borders. And I'm asking that be included in the discussion, that's all I'm asking for, and I wanted to make it clear, okay? Number two, very few people in this room, and I don't know, maybe nobody in this room but me. Number two, very few people in this room, and I don't know, maybe nobody in this room but me, lives in the Almani, Rosemead, Temple City area. Most of us live within 10 minutes of campus. Or if we live further away, we're a teacher who's coming here to do an eight-hour day. And if you're a student that wants to take a math class for one hour a day, and you live in Almani below the 10 freeway, which is part of the PCC district, okay? It's going to take you 30 to 45 minutes, one way, to get here, to take one class for one hour, five days a week, okay? None of you can appreciate that. That's why my district people, when we had that master plan, said, "We need local services if it's not online." We need to think about, in whatever small percent outside the current Colorado-Del Mar borders, PCC light, think about us. Because not everybody comes four hours a day or eight hours a day, three days a week. They just want one class for an hour, and it doesn't make sense, okay? So, that's why, that's of particular importance to me. And finally, I put this warning on us all, and it's the same warning I gave. I'm currently reading a book by Nobel economist, Nobel economist that wrote a book, it's called Thinking Fast or Slow. And it's basically, the premise is, people don't always make rational decisions. And why don't they make rational decisions? Because economists are always making these predictions, and people don't act rationally. To make the long story short, we have a tendency, many times within us, because of our nostalgic views, or whatever you want to call that, to look to facts to prove our point, rather than looking to facts and what they may actually be trying to tell us that they're trying to say. And so, though, many students are talking to you about how important it is to come together. And as much as I agree and totally want all that kind of student interaction and think that that's the right way, and as much as I and the Beverly Hills High parents think that gymnasium is just heaven on earth, I'm afraid sometimes our opinion is distorted by this deep historical, "I just can't get through Christmas without seeing It's a Wonderful Life." So, there's that warning out to us to not let that sway what may be the future economic reality that we have to deal with.
Trustee Mann, you had your light.
I just have a point that is kind of off the periphery, but I think it's really important that we keep stressing this. I keep hearing students saying, "Well, if we just put more chairs in the classroom, we just put more chairs in the classroom," et cetera. But it's my understanding, and our academic senate president is here. There is, and I don't know what you, I don't know what the initials are, but faculty determines what the maximum size of a class should be. For example, I used to teach English I. If you, and I like it many, many places, English I is usually scheduled anywhere there's a vacant classroom because there's so many of those classes. If you put an English I class in a classroom with 150 chairs, you certainly can't have 150 students with one, with one teacher. So, I think that we need to always, am I wrong? I mean, I see some faculty who are smiling, but I think we really need to.
Enrollment management besides.
Please don't get any 150 students in English I.
And I think we always need to, you know, to remember that there, that there is, those numbers were arrived at because the thinking was, this is the maximum that you can do and do the adequate kind of job. So, it makes, I get very concerned. What I have students tell me, that they work, and I'm going to keep saying this because it concerns me. They work as a grader for a faculty member here at PCC, and they're given a template to grade. There's faculty that have lots of that. And on the template, they mark what's on the template. But the concern I have with that, and poor Mr. Soto, I bent his ear for about two hours on the way back from Washington because I was so upset by it. A template ignores your students with new ideas. A template ignores students who really need help because you can't pick it, pick it up. A template is for the student who regurgitates exactly what they've heard in class. And I'm really concerned that we not do anything that dilutes the quality of the education that students get here. And overfilling classrooms, to me, seems to be a very dangerous first step. So, I know the students are very legitimate concerns here and that we have, we have a need for this. But I, and I'm all for flexible classrooms, because I would assume if the class is 150, and then we make 150, if the class should have 20, then we, then we cut it, you know, reach from figure of the room, so it's 20. But I think the idea is, that if we can just keep cramming more and more and more students into the same space, that that in some way is helping students graduate or get through or get an education, is not really the best idea.
Mr. Thompson?
If I could, sorry, if I could just respond to that?
Go ahead, President.
Dr. Mann, you're right about, it is, it is the faculty that the NCN, or normal closing number for each class, based on research in pedagogy, what works well depending on the discipline and the particular content of a course. But I would agree with you that that is something that the architects, designers, I think, should take into consideration. Our numbers have not, were, have only recently been determined. We had a very laissez-faire system of deciding our class size in the past, and perhaps we did not do a good job of designing our current classroom facilities to accommodate our real numbers. So, I would say that that is indeed a factor that should be taken into consideration as we move forward.
Mr. Thompson, I had, saw your light.
In Dr. Mann's earlier comments, he stressed the issue of enrollment and urged that we do an analysis of that and try to determine whether we anticipate increased enrollment or the same, the same, or a decreased enrollment. And I think that's a really important issue, because I don't know the answer to it. And I don't think Jeanette was suggesting any answer for it either, but it's one of those things. My, my impression is that community colleges, at least PCC, attracts more public school students overall than it does private school students coming out of high school. And I just don't know, and again, in PUSD, the enrollment of high schools is decreasing, as was suggested. And I'm not saying that's the way we want it to be, because education matters, education, public education really is critical to the entire community, and we need to stress that. But I don't think we need to just assume that our enrollment is going to go up over the next 10 or 12 or 15 years. But we need to do a very careful analysis of that, because it's just, it's unknown, I think, at least as far as the information I have available.
Thank you. I think that's a good point. I want to make one other point, too, as my expectations with the process. And this is not a criticism, but I think it was, it's a mistake to put a number and a bond approval as the final outcome. Because I think the process should first and foremost identify what our needs are based on our educational master plan. And then, once we determine what the needs are, then we can determine, okay, then how are we going to find the resources to meet those needs? And I saw that you, you did present that. But this would suggest to the public possibly, we're all about just putting a bond on the ballot to get another $250 million. And I don't think that's the focus. I don't, I don't even want to know how much it's going to cost until we determine what our needs are in that, because it may be more, it may be less. And I was shocked, I've been spending a lot of time in Rancho Mirage lately, and College of the Desert, with a third of our enrollment passed a $365 million bond measure. I couldn't imagine, and it has transformed that, that physical plan of that campus. So, I, I'm surprised, so anyway, so my, my hope would be, I know it's always good, and we're making students declare an educational goal within a couple of semesters after starting. And we should have a goal in mind, but for me, the goal is building the campus, and then we'll figure out the resource needs consequentially.
Rick, would you go back just for a moment, as others are thinking of any finishing questions? Go back to that era where about 1985, where Chancellor Scott came in? Is that it? Okay. And first of all, President Baum, you know, I did ask Rick and the team to present everything. And we wanted to also let the public and the faculty and students know that the funding for this would not be coming out of apportionment funding. That if we did decide, that, you know, there has been an issue, is, well, you're taking money out of apportionment funding and putting it into capital. That will not be the case. But I completely agree, the, you know, just at the early point of the process that you have that, and now we can, you know, remove that, set that aside for now and move forward with the process itself. But I did want to, you know, and I come at this in the form of narrative. And I just would put this, and I see, you know, and I'm listening intently to the input, which is excellent, and looking around at the input on the walls, which has been really superb. But this, more or less, is what Jack Scott encountered in 1987, okay? And if you look at it as an anthropologist or an archaeologist, okay? You would say, well, I would say this, okay? This is the way I would narrate this. You have the three original buildings there, and then, which go back to 1924. Most of the rest of the campus is your, your standard variety 1960s community college campus. The majority of community colleges in this country were founded in the 1960s, okay? What's special about this college is that it was founded in 1924. Now, imagine, and of course, I think Trustee Martin, you, were you on the board in 85?
1924, no.
Not sure about the 24. Yeah, but 85 I was, yes.
So, but imagine that we're.
Yeah, we were both on the board in 1985.
You've counted this, in 1987, when you were looking at this photograph, you were looking at a college that was seriously degraded and deteriorated and was in danger of becoming a 1960s institutionalized, standard-issue community college. And what you decided to do together was to do something bold. And you did something bold by recourseing to your past, okay? By recourseing to the one thing that we have that no other community college has in this nation, and that is this past, this history. And so, what you did, and I, you know, I was half kidding when I was saying it was Jack's plan. But you have those three original buildings, and what you clearly decided to do, whether you meant to or not, when you added the library, you decided to continue that language. You decided to take a language that was essentially a dead language, like Latin, and to revive it. And you built this classic library that, in, whenever it was, in the late 80s. Unthinkable, unthinkable. And, and then if you look at, you know, you can keep that there, and of course, the rest of it is, you know, as I say, it doesn't, you know, that looked like any one of 60 community colleges, and, you know, take those three buildings now. So, and then when you fast-forward to President Kostler's, you know, when you were looking at the 2010 master plan, that plan was bold, too, okay? And it's really a miracle what you've pulled off, what the college has pulled off in barely a decade. You know, you have the, you have some, just a, well, the parking structure and some utilitarian things. But you have the Center for the Arts, which is the capstone. And, you know, who could have imagined it, you know, 12 years ago or so? When this opens next year, it'll, it'll completely transform the spirit and the environment of the college. The building that we're in now, the campus center, is one of, I consider to be one of the most successful buildings we have because of its social nature. The two most successful things in this, in this building are the Wi-Fi lounge and the cafeteria, where, which are the, you know, the real great gathering spaces. And of course, you have engineering, technology, you know, the bookstore, and so on and so forth. So, all I would say is that I would ask us to be cognizant of that story that we've been telling for quite some time. And for us not to, in fact, if anything, because of budget, because of challenges, to also be bold. Because the other challenge that Jack faced, and you faced, in 1985, 86, 87, is imagine, there was no such thing as Prop 39, okay? There was no going to the voters for a bond. You had just passed Prop 13. The community colleges had essentially been dead in the water for about 10 years because of Prop 13. And so, of course, what you did was actually raise the money for that. And you raised the money because I think the community responded and said, "This is, this is our core value. This is what's permanent about us." So, I think the, the wonderful kind of thing moving forward is that that history gives us an opportunity to continue and carry forward this language in the 21st, 21st century. So, I just wanted to remind us of that, because there's, and then the other thing is a practical matter, just getting practical for a minute, all right? Let's leave out all the innovations and, you know, bells and whistles and possible technology and anticipating, you know, two of those links, modernization, what was the seismic, and sustainability, okay? Well, sustainability, right, that's not an option. We have to move forward on sustainability, okay? And that's also, by the way, something that we didn't consider very much in 87 or 96. That's one of the new options. Seismic, that's not very, you know, kind of bells and whistles, but it's got to be done. So, you're talking about 70 million, 75 million, just in retrofit. It's got to be done, one way or another. Especially, and notice that the retrofit was on what I call the, the old language buildings. Because unless we retrofit those buildings, we're going to lose this language. We're going to lose this history. You know, you can have buildings that last 200 years. I was talking to Greg this morning, you know, I grew up in New York, New York Public Library, you know, it's 100, you know, you can have buildings, and these buildings have lasted and will last, and those 1960 buildings were tearing down. Because they didn't, you know, they just, they weren't this. So, I do think that even if we weren't bold, we're still going to have to dig up about a half of that 250 million just to get the classrooms, you know, refurbished and the seismic retrofit and so on and so forth. So, and that was it, except, you know, whatever other comments, but to, to, what you're seeing tonight is really the result of hours and hours of work on the part of Rick and the staff and the architects. And I'm very grateful, and wanted to express my appreciation.
Thank you. On behalf of the board, I want to thank you and the staff and the consultants and the committee for, for this process, for getting this off the ground. It's, it's going to be so important that we continue with this spirit of inclusiveness and engagement from all sectors of the campus, because then you're going to get to the point where you start, decisions start to be made as to one direction or another. And then we're going to have a line of people at the, at the podium that say, "You're not listening to us. You have not heard us." And I need the people who are part of the process then to speak out and verify that this was an inclusive process that didn't lock anybody out. Not everybody's point of view may prevail, but at the same time, if the process is sound, it will be very helpful for the board then to respond accordingly.
Mr. Baum, could I put a footnote into the president's little history note? I would just like to say, could you go back to the 1964 slide again, what the campus looked like?
The 85 slide or the 49 slide?
Well, whatever, the one before Jack, before the Jack plan. When we, I, I just want to say two things. First of all, when people come to see me, most of whom in somewhere connected with higher ed, and I bring them order to show them the campus, they're really impressed with what it looks like. And several people have said, "This looks like a private university." You've got the sculpture garden, which we didn't mention, you've got, you know, you've got the nice music in your parking structure. I always park there so they can hear this. This library is spectacular. This is a beautiful, beautiful campus. When the, when the master planner, when the person who did our first master plan did the first presentation, John may have not remembered this, but it's etched in my memory cells. One of his suggestions was, and I remember he had just done Caltech, he said, "You know, Caltech has a wall. There's something called the Caltech wall. Anyone who's seen Caltech knows the wall. One of the things you might consider doing is, your campus is so ugly. You might consider building a wall around it, so no one can see it, and that can be the PCC wall, and we're contiguous with the Caltech."
That wasn't me, that was Dave Hannah.
No, no, I didn't say it was you did that. I said, no, it was the master planner who suggested that. No, no, I'm saying you were there, you remembered. No, no, I'm saying you were there, you remembered, I didn't want you to imply that. That, that then, then you could have the PCC wall, and, you know, you're right next to the Caltech wall. No one ever said the Caltech had a wall, because his campus was so ugly, but he said that, that would be an option you might want to, might want to consider. The key word there was, he said, "Your campus is so ugly now, that you, that would be an easy fix on it, to put a wall." And now I think it's, it's beautiful. So I'm underlining what, what Marcus said, and we did take bold steps, and we did do the first 100 million without a bond. And I, and I think that's really, really important.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Rocha, thank you, Vice President Van Pelt. We're going to move on to our next item, item six, future board meetings, discussion with possible action. At our board meeting, we had, at the last board meeting, we went to schedule the, move to make the meeting at 5:00 with a closed session at 4:00, because we will only have... We'll come back to that. So we will, with closed session at 4:00, I put it as possible action, because the members of the board were going to go back and see if that still worked with their schedules. And so if, if there's no objections, we'll proceed with that schedule for the next board meeting. Okay? The, Dr. Rocha, did you have something you wanted to add?
I wanted to talk for a moment, just raise without, without action. Mary Thompson has been working hard with our friends at PUSD on the joint meeting. And this is more difficult than you can imagine. So, you know, I'll get back to you, President Baum, but, you know, the dates that they have suggested are kind of not working for us, you know, and, and they're kind of wanting to commit to a Tuesday night, if we, if we do it. You know, we were trying to bend them to a Wednesday night, you know, kind of do a home and home series, you know, like football games, but, so I'm just saying that we're working on that, and that unless the board has some predilection, that we'll continue to work on that until we can find a date.
I was speaking to one of the board members from the Pasadena Board of Education over the weekend, and we, this came up, and they indicate, I said, "They're going through a lot of their own districting process, they're going to have a ballot measure, and things like that, so they're fine with putting this off, and that if we want to look at some, even some dates in the summer, that they were open to that." So I don't, I want to, they were floating some dates in April, but I think we can communicate to them, we're okay waiting a little bit on that, unless, and so, if there's any objections for that. Okay, and then, so the next meeting after that will be the May 2 meeting, with the meeting with associated students. We may look at moving that meeting earlier as well, so that it also might facilitate participation by students. So I would like to ask the administrations to, administration to consult with the AAS to see if a, of a 5:00 start time might be feasible as well, to, if that would enhance the ability of students to participate.
Mr. President?
Okay, yes, ma'am. Trustee Brown.
I have a question. Could you remind me why we are changing the meeting to 4:00?
The reason was that we have a lot of business to conduct at that April meeting, and we are only going to have one meeting in April, because the campus will be closed on the 18th. Including the, the public hearings with the collective bargaining agreement between both those. So rather than keeping us till midnight, if we started early, we might be able to still have enough time to conduct the business that's needed to be conducted.
Thanks.
Dr. Mann?
I just want to comment that we, even though the campus is often closed in the middle of April, the board almost always has met.
I understand.
And, and, but that's, that's fine with me if we don't meet, but we often meet when the campus is not, is when the campus is closed.
I understand that. My feeling, at least in my consultations with the president, is also, the board wants to contribute to whatever cost savings might be realized by the campus closing that, that time as well, because we're trying to save resources in order to, to find ways to fund our spring forward session and other purposes, and so...
All right, that's, that's, that's fine. But, you know, I, I do think the board ought to seriously consider another retreat for team building or something.
Oh, sure.
And that we can do, we could even do that at someone's house, if we put it, open the front door.
I think you're right, and the board will reserve the right to call a meeting if, if we can, or if we find it's necessary to, and we'll, we'll do that. I did get one comment card at the very end, as we were wrapping up the session, so I want to make sure that if somebody had an eagerness to address the board, they have that opportunity. So Mr. Clinton, if you want to come forward, we'll do this, so that you have an opportunity to say something before we adjourn.
Hello, everybody, Kevin Clinton. Everyone should know me by now. Hello, new people, I don't know you. The reason I came up here was, first of all, I wanted to, I didn't get to know everything about this meeting, I kind of missed the agenda. I got out of class early, so I got to come. So I wanted to thank Martin and Mann especially, because I saw you were taking really good care and notice of this issue, and thinking outside of the box. I don't know what it is, so I actually just wanted to ask some questions. Also, since sustainability is on the agenda, I wanted to thank Vice President Van Pelt. I've heard you've been doing amazing things on campus for sustainability, but yeah, I just basically wanted kind of a rough overview of what we were talking about for the master plan, if that wasn't too much of a hassle.
Okay, well, thank you. We won't go back over it, but it is...
Not the entire thing, just a quick, because I didn't, I mean, I missed out on a lot.
It'll be on the, it'll be on the video feed, so that'll, so anyway, thank you for your public comment.
Mr. President Baum, there, there is not on here future agenda items, but I had, I had two.
And we'll, as part of announcements, go ahead and request the agenda items.
Okay, well, you, well, okay, so just, are you ready for them?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Well, one was, I, I want to make sure that we schedule the Triple CT election, I think we have to do it this April meeting, otherwise we will miss the deadline. I think the deadline is sometime mid-April. And the second is, the Legislative Advocacy Committee did meet on Monday night, Mr. Soto and Dr. Fallow and I met, and we do have two or three recommendations, which I forward to you, and I'd like to have this as an action item on the April 4th agenda.
Okay, thank you. I'll work with Dr. Rocha to address those agenda items.
And if I can make another announcement, which I forgot, and Juan has left, is he, no, he's back there. He may have to help me with this. I did go over to the local CNN, and taped a five-minute interview on the Student Success Task Force, and that's going to be aired at the, is it the top of the news? Is that what it is? And I don't remember the week. Could he, could he give us that information if he has it?
I'll, we'll let him update us real quick.
Yeah, I was going to take him a second.
While he's coming up, Mr. Clinton, too, if, Vice President Van Pelt, if you could email Mr. Clinton the written materials that you presented, that will give you the overview that you were requesting, that was of the discussion.
Thank you.
And I see, have you, if, if you could give your email to Mrs. Thompson, we'll get that emailed to you.
It's on the sheet, yeah. Okay, the, when is that going to be aired, Juan, do you remember?
It's going to be aired in mid-April, and I can forward everyone the schedule. It's part of CNN's Headline News Local Edition. Dr. Rocha was a guest earlier this year, and it actually airs the first 15 minutes and the last 15 minutes of every hour, so it's on Headline News, so it's, it's going on continuously.
And you'll email them the, the week?
Yes, I will do that.
And the channel?
Yes.
Okay. With nothing further before the board, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.